And then I go into breakfast and I'm like, oh, everything's in. I don't know what you're doing with me. And Chad spoke.
Just set the order.
Yeah, she hates. She hates you.
I don't know.
Yeah. Give her a blank check.
Oh, you're too much.
Hi, Chief.
So in the Blues, even in March, I'm sorry to tell you. That I'm not going to. I got a friend that's doing it. She just made it.
Are you serious?
Yeah.
She going to move south? That's easy. She's going to let us all down.
Yeah, she can go from south to north. But she just did the Oregon trip up to down. Not all of it, but she did. And then she needed a break and she said, well, some of the reasons. So she's going to do the Appalachian. She's from Florida. She's a fool girl. Down south. Retired. Now she just.
You an Appalachian child? I'm Hartsen. And I've been to the startup in Maine.
Yeah, I think I've watched it.
Yeah. It's, you can get there from there. And it's a three, four hour drive. Beautiful. And it turns into National Park.
I'd love to do it, but yeah.
That's so funny.
How are you doing?
I say another voicemail today. And that voicemail has. It's a, it's a South market. South George. Can you just make sure you follow her? I think all she really wanted to do is talk. Good. Good. Thank you. I'm glad you're here.
Mr. Mayor? Hey, I got a, I got a. I got a paperweight. It's on my desk. This morning after you told me that I didn't have a paperweight, I got one now. It's on my desk. So we're good now. Yes. Well, it'll stay with me. But I'm long gone.
It is quite shed. It's had marvelous.
Hey, sir.
Hi.
Yes, sir.
Where's the fire?
I got a cousin in Ireland that people have watched this story and I'm like, show me more. My sister's in Germany and was coming for a joke.
I know. Hello.
Okay.
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 You're welcome. Congrats. We're going to be here. Is she in Maine? She's in a wedding.
Yeah, no, we, we haven't done that for us. Um, there's nothing like that for the people. And they interact with us every day. Because they have a.
Yeah, the 23rd of July means nothing because there's a council meeting. So, um, unless, or you're leaving.
I'll take a look. But I have definitely not done that since I've been here. Yeah, for sure.
Okay, so yeah, the next council meeting will be the first one in August.
Be there.
And then, um.
I do feel like the chief's been.
Over the summer.
Yeah.
So just let me know when, when it's free and we'll get those. Do you have a? Okay. Just. Or email me something afterward so that I have it to attach.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah. If. Can I keep? Do you need first action? Cool. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead. Ryan, just push it over here. What do you have? Some sort of rush.
I don't know.
Is it?
The mayor didn't ban me. The mayor's still here.
So you're okay. But everybody else left you.
I know.
I don't know.
Let's see.
No.
How are you today?
Good. How are you?
Good. How's your summer going?
Very good. Very busy.
Good. Good.
But that's fine. We'll get them for this.
No, I think it was the fact that he wants.
I could see the smoke coming out of your ear.
Time being seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order. First on the agenda is an announcement that says the meeting, the McCannsburg Borough Council, is being recorded in live stream for the purposes of transmission or transparency and increased public access. The live stream, along with the recordings of previously held meetings, can be accessed on the Borough's YouTube channel. Start it without just. We can all rise from the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance sealed by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for. We have the roll call, please.
Vice President Anthony.
Present.
Councilwoman Agartha.
Present.
Councilman Gary.
Here.
Councilman O'Neill.
Here.
Junior Councilperson Covert.
Here.
Mayor Ritter.
Here.
Engineer John Gazeem. Chief Myers.
Here.
Chief Neff.
Here.
EMC Wardle.
Here.
Community Engagement Coordinator Bayer.
Here.
Manager Thompson.
Here, ma'am.
We have a forum.
You'll notice that some of our council folks aren't here. Today is mid-June, so tis the season. We hope they're having a good time where they are. Our approval of the agenda. This is where we add or remove items from the consent agenda or regular agenda.
Moment, Mr. Chair. I have two items. One, I'd like to remove the presentation of resolution to Sergeant Tim Dyer, understanding that he's going to have that presentation at a later date. I'd like to remove that from the agenda. I'd also like to move that we remove the approval of the special events permit for Railroad Avenue on June 20th from the agenda. Given the complexity of the question, the absence of legal counsel and parliamentarian, and the lack of time to fully coordinate with all parties, given the uniqueness of Jubilee Day and its impact on the downtown.
I'll second that. Discussion?
The only discussion I have is that I hope that this is an opportunity for all entities to start working together. And I would implore that we do have the Chamber and DMP and the Borough Council start working together collaboratively in the future so that we can pull off great events in the future together with less complications in the future.
We agree. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Passes. Any amendments or changes to the proposed minutes? Hearing none. This is time for citizen comments. Citizens' input on items concerning Borough Council is welcome during this time. Comment is limited to three minutes. For an accurate public record, citizens are asked to approach the podium and state their name and address. By request, written or electronic submissions may be made to the Borough Secretary and entered into the public record. As a reminder, council and staff do not respond to comments and questions in this forum directly. Any appropriate responses will be provided in the minutes approved at the following meeting and posted on the Borough's website. Do we have any citizens' comments? Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry I'm late and I don't know if this has been covered or not, but I just wanted to make a comment about.
Can you state your name and address real quick?
Oh, I'm sorry. Phyllis Voroody. That's V-O-R-O-D-I. I live at 509 Allison Avenue for 52 years. And may I make my comment? I read in the information that is sent out from the Borough, the newsletter, whatever, which I love, and I see in there the thinking of buying or renting or whatever, Frankenberger Place or whatever. I'm totally against that unless they do the streets first. The streets in this town are horrible. Horrible. I've lived here for 52 years and I don't know what else to say, but I would definitely be against spending any money on that new building unless and until our streets are fixed. And I don't mean every other day fixing the same pothole.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Chad Hopple, 316 Stone Ridge Court, New Cumberland, PA. I am the applicant that was removed from the agenda today, which is very disappointing to me. I was actually, had a request made that I remove it myself, but that would mean I didn't really believe in what I was coming here to talk about. So just wanted to reiterate what we were looking to do, and I know that we're not going to discuss it anymore, but we were looking to have a beer garden that was included with Jubilee Day. Not necessarily as part of Jubilee Day, but independently. Myself and three other businesses that are local that do business in Mechanicsburg. And actually, three of us have spots at Jubilee Day. I also have a business that's a main sponsor of Jubilee Day. I'm extremely happy to be a main sponsor of Jubilee Day. I'm a small business. I've been going to Jubilee Day since I was a child. I also believe that there's opportunity here for growth and to go into 2024 instead of 1950. So I hope that in the future, instead of just kind of pigeonholing an application, that there's actually some discussion had, especially with the person who submitted the permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Some of you know me. My name is Brenda Miller and I live at 419 Valley Street, which is the corner of South Broad and Valley. Now, I'm here to talk about the sidewalk issue. More importantly, I'm here to talk about the ADA compliant curb corner issue, not the curve of the corner. I was very, very shocked when I got my bill that said that I was going to have to pay $4,500, almost $4,500 for my share, which is 50% of the ADA compliant corner. Now, I came down to the Borough to talk to somebody on June 5th. I talked to two people. I believe it was your code people. And I was told that I would get answers to a couple of questions that I have about that specifically. Now, I understand the sidewalks are my responsibility. The curves are my responsibility. I don't think the ADA compliant corners are my responsibility. $4,500 is a lot of money. Anyway, my two questions are. I want to see in the, in the codes or the ordinances where it states that the ADA compliance is the responsibility of the residents. It states in here, which I have, Chapter 21, Ordinance 892, that talks all about the corners and, or not the corners, the sidewalks and the, um, the curves, but it never mentions the corners. Okay, now I understand that it's, I thought it was the Borough's responsibility and everybody I talked to thought it was the Borough's responsibility too, but it's not. So to make this short and quick, because I cannot do anything about the corners. I'm not allowed to do anything about it. It's, they, they won't let me. They won't let me get my own contractors. Therefore, I'm stuck paying prevailing wage as a resident, which isn't right. Governments pay prevailing wage. Residents don't pay prevailing wage. So I need answers to those two questions. I didn't hear anything back from the Borough Office and I also called Panoni, which is the contractor, I guess, that was hired, that won the bid. And I spoke to Ryan and he was going to get in touch with the Borough Manager and his boss and get back to me, and no one has gotten back to me. So I want answers and I will not be letting this go. If it means I have to get in touch with the newspapers, I will. And I just, I need answers. And I need answers as to what is my responsibility legally with ordinances to back it up. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
How you doing? Steve Fleming. I live at 702 Vancouver Avenue in Mechanicsburg. Redeveloping with my business partner, the property on Railroad Avenue. So, you know, I just wanted to speak, you know, in, in, in response to Chad's comments, you know, this project that we've, we've started is a very hard project. You know, we are re-tenanting a building on a side street. Our vision, we brought to council and staff early on was to bring a brewery back to downtown Mechanicsburg. And every opportunity that we can get to allow those breweries, the local breweries, to sell their, their product in the downtown is an opportunity to demonstrate to them the economic viability of them locating here. And every time they don't participate or they can't participate, we, we take that opportunity away from the project, which is, is really a catalyst project for downtown Mechanicsburg. It should spill over into other properties and, and other things. And Jubilee Day is the biggest day of the year. I mean, it, if, if we could have had two breweries that we have been pursuing, you know, I can't say that there were any meaningful conversations, but trying to convince that there's an application, a viable application for them here is missed until we hopefully can get it back online for next year. So, you know, it's disappointing. I understand you have your reasons, but it's, it's, it's hard for us to attract tenants when things like this happen. Now, I will say, you know, we're very thankful that the Borough moved forward with the temporary closure. It wasn't part of our project. It was in the master plan. We thought it was a cool idea. It, it really has a positive impact on our project. And the more events that we can have there, the more viable that will become, the more attractive the, the area will become. And it, and it really has potential to become something. So, you know, keep going with that. Let us know how we can help with that. We want to be a partner in making that successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jeremy Freeland. I am the chairperson of the Jubilee Day Committee for the Chamber of Commerce. I'm also a board member, was president of the board the last year of the Chamber of Commerce and been an employee of Mechanicsburg School District since 2005. Nine years as a secondary administrator, eight years in charge of various responsibilities, including safety for the schools in Mechanicsburg and then currently as a school police officer. I can't begin to express the amount of appreciation I have for each of you and for what you do to promote this community, to promote the Borough and the advocacy and volunteerism you guys put forth every day to, to do great things for this community. And I thank you for that. I also thank you for tabling the item on the agenda this evening. I respect Chad. I respect his efforts. I think it's noble. I think it's outstanding. And I think had more time been given, as indicated by Councilman Björk, I think that's who asked it to come up. We potentially could have come to a more amicable agreement on the matter, but, but I actually really want to appreciate the thoughts that shared by, shared by Ms. Agartha as well. This is a great opportunity for the three entities to work together and really form a very positive collaboration, be very proactive to be able to champion events such as this in the future. It's just a matter, in this situation, unfortunately, due to timing and proximity to the event. But I'm very eager for that. Please know that the Chamber is very eager to do what it can to continue to support economic development here in Mechanicsburg Borough. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, the residents back. My name is Mark Sturrock for North River Tree. I got two questions. Under your consent for agenda you have tonight, you have the Borough is applying for a DCD grant for Streetscape for downtown. Why is the Borough getting involved in the DMP organization when that's supposed to be an independent organization from the Borough of Mechanicsburg? When this all started, they were supposed to be, and I quote from a certain person, no taxpayer money or time will be used in this, in these projects. Seems like a lot of Borough time and money is being used in these projects and the Borough manager's time is being used. The other question I have. Didn't find it. Oh. You also under the consent agenda you have for, also for a beer, food truck, et cetera, for July 12th on Down railroad Avenue. Has everything been provided where you have carting available? Certified people from the state that's going to be certified, the card people, how's this going to be enforced? Is the Borough going to be reliable for someone goes out and gets in an accident and kills somebody, gets in an accident? Or, or basically any other items that could cause any injuries or damage to the property? First of all, they're going to come back and say, where would you serve last? And they'll come back, right back to here and it's going to come right back to this, to the Borough for providing them the alcohol. Has anybody ever even thought about that? Because we are being responsible, you guys are being responsible for any damages or any accidents or anybody getting killed in this whole mess. Maybe it's something we should think about before we actually start advertising for a beer garden and alcohol event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Matalo, 21 East Factory Street, Mechanicsburg. I'm here to tell you I have no water in my alley. It all dried up. The tap hole's all gone. I just wanted to come in for my monthly, let you know about it. And it's, it's a nice big hole, six inches deep. It probably should be, put some gravel in it like before and it will be going in next spring. So just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? All right, hearing none. Mayor's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. May 23rd, the mayor and the first lady Linda judged miniature cities for Mrs. Waldman's social studies class. Fun, interesting and rewarding. May 25th, officiated a no fee wedding at the Union Church. The 27th, participated in the Mechanicsburg Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony at the Mechanicsburg Cemetery G-A-R Monument, followed by a service at the Lincoln Cemetery, honored all who served. The 30th, tribute to Veterans Breakfast hosted by State Rep. Cheryl Delosier, held at the First Church of God Community Center. June 1, the mayor and the first lady popped corn at the Joseph T. Simpson Public Library to kick off the summer student reading program. 7th, Kingsbury Area High School Alumni Association 128 Annual Dinner was held at the Mechanicsburg Club. Eight scholarships were awarded. 14th, officiated a no fee wedding in Hamden Township. 15th, United States Flag Retirement Ceremony was held on the square by the veterans of Mechanicsburg, thanks to Paul and Nancy Kiner. End of report.
Thank you very much. And we move on to the consent agenda. Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Passes. Regular agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Per item on the regular agenda is discussion and action to approve the Allendale Road Extended Sewer Connection Incentive.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second?
A second.
Discussion?
Yes, sir. As a matter of background, we've been talking about this for probably about a year now. And the timing has now come to where the sewer main is being. And the timing has now come to where the sewer main is being laid in place by the Landmark Homes folks. And the motion on the table or the recommendation from staff is that the borough, the borough incentivized the connections by providing the grinder pumps to the two property owners that are borough residents, borough properties on that Allendale Road Extended. And, and then we will provide those at the time of their scheduling as far as their ability to get a contractor on site to do the hookups and the removal of their septic systems.
College? Hunch? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass. Mr. Wardle?
Would you join me as well?
Would the chiefs please join me as well?
I like your Mechanicsburg green.
I have nothing for safety yellow.
Resolution 3, 2024. Whereas, the citizenry and officials of the borough of Mechanicsburg, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania desire within to express their recognition and thanks to Nate Wardle. Upon his resignation from Mechanicsburg Borough's Emergency Management Coordinator, where he served through eight Jubilee Days, one pandemic and countless emergencies, both long, short and slow. And whereas, he brought an innovation to the position by bringing thorough attention to detail, to regular updates to the borough's emergency operations plan and by implementing an annual scenario-based tabletop exercise to review and refine procedures for first responders and borough staff. And whereas, borough officials and community recognize his diligent and dedicated service to the borough of Mechanicsburg and for citizens. His faithful service for over seven years, always putting the safety of Mechanicsburg Borough and its residents first, shows a high moral standard and outstanding loyalty to the borough of Mechanicsburg. And now there being resolved by the borough of Mechanicsburg and the officials and, I'm sorry, the officials of the borough and Mechanicsburg, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania, authority of the same do hereby fix their signatures below in resolution 03, 2024 and its recognition. And I could have signed by most of us. We'll be having the rest of them sign when they return.
Probably should have given you an opportunity to speak, Nate, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. You know my background, never short for words. Really appreciative to the municipality, to council, to, to Lane and Roger before him. You know, I had just moved to the borough and Cumberland County Department of Public Safety reached out to me and said, hey, we have an EMC position that we'd really love to fill. You know that we need somebody in every municipality, otherwise they're not eligible for federal funding. And I said, well, where is it? And they said, it's in the borough of Mechanicsburg. I'm like, that's great, because I just moved there. And they're like, perfect. And so that began my time as Emergency Management Coordinator here and it's been a great opportunity. For those who know me, I was at the time working in communications for the state and then by the time I finished, I'm now working outside of state government and not as related to emergency preparedness anymore. And moving out of this role was a bittersweet decision, but I know that I can't be here for every meeting and can't give this position the time that I feel it needs in my new role as Director of Communications for CSL Plasma. And so, just nothing but thanks and appreciation to everyone seated on this side of me, but particularly the two individuals seated on this side of me. Without Chief Neff and Chief Myers and their institutional knowledge for Jubilee Day, for the history of this borough from an emergency perspective, this borough would not be anywhere near as well off as it is from an emergency standpoint. And so, really, a lot of the credit for the work that I've done goes to these two individuals. Without them, we'd have Jubilee Day and we'd be planned for it, but it wouldn't be to the level that they have successfully carried out over many years now here in Mechanicsburg. And so, as we prepare for Jubilee Day in two days, and you'll hear from me a little bit about that later as to what we're doing to prepare. You know, it's, I tell people all the time, my role as Emergency Management Coordinator for the borough of Mechanicsburg is 364 days a year in Jubilee Day. And Jubilee Day really is its own adventure. But with Jeremy in the room, I think it's fitting to say that we've become a really well-oiled machine in making sure that we are prepared for any potential. This will be the hottest Jubilee Day we've had since I've been EMC and probably one of the hottest in the history of Jubilee Day. And so, any, any adventure is coming true on my way out the door, but I wouldn't want it any other way. So, thank you.
Prevention Report.
Thank you, sir. My report is submitted in your packet, it's available online for the public. I would call attention to crosswalk painting and just ask that everybody in attendance and online just be on the lookout for our team as they're out there working hard to get these crosswalks painted and refreshed. They're making really good pace, but have had a couple of close calls with traffic since, since they started. And I would just ask the public and, and everybody here to please reach out to friends and family and let them know to be on the lookout and, and please be careful around our folks. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you very much. Finance, Administration and Ordinance. We have a quarterly update coming up, I believe, mid-July?
Yes, sir.
And that's all I have. Public Works, Mr. Bjerg.
Thank you. So, sanitary sewer superintendent Huey's not here, do we have any questions? Nothing? This is going to be quick, I think. Anything from Engineer Mediski? Mr. Manager, anything new?
No, the only, the only thing of note is Superintendent Huey is at a conference where he's accepting the award on behalf of the Sewer Department and, and will certainly have another go at, at appreciating that department when he gets back.
Public Works, anything there new from the office?
No, their summer work plan is underway and crosswalks is, is a, a big portion of that, trying to get those refreshed while the summer months are there. And so, you, you'll see those start to refresh very quickly, especially in the dry weather.
Are they still able to paint when it's this hot?
They are, they are. The humidity does slow down a little bit, the, the drying time, so it does, it does slow the progress a bit, but not too much.
Okay, thank you. Chief Myers, anything to add to your written report?
Just that we're having Sergeant Tim Dyers retiring after 33 years of working for the borough. We're going to have, I sent an invite to all of you, but we're going to have a little ceremony to have all the folks from around the area, police departments who know him, want to come by and say bye-bye or whatever they want to say, pretty much probably say anything. But, Tim, that's on the 28th of June, from 11 to 1. And then we also have a sergeant that we're going to swear in. We're doing that the 24th at 6 o'clock.
24th of June?
24th. Yeah, his parents are in town, which I didn't know they ever moved. They moved to Hertle Beach. So, they're in town for something and again, this is one of those things, let's just put this together. Okay. We're all invited to both of those.
24th of June, 6 o'clock, and it's going to be halfway. Okay, council chambers and the 28th, 11 to 1 also here. Anything else, too?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for the chief? No? Chief Neff, anything you'd like to add to your written report?
Couple of things. First off, my report identified, number one, about the public safety and the priorities. There is no way that we could be at a level, we've really established such a high level of that bar of professionalism within all of us in emergency services for Jubilee Day. It not only serves specific for that day, but it blends throughout the whole year and we're thankful for it, but we definitely wouldn't be anywhere to this level if it wasn't for Nate Wardle. I've had the opportunity to work with some true professionals through the years in emergency management and for sure, he's, he's one of the top on the line. So, I think it's just Mechanicsburg is very, very thankful and I'm thankful to be able to opportunity to work with him. So, it's Nate's day, for sure. The other thing is, a couple of things. So, the fire crew's been really busy training for this Jubilee Day. We're, we're looking at this one way more cautious than maybe quite a few of them in the past is just because of that, the temperature is going to be spiking, maybe 10 degrees higher. We're hoping that we have the resources to also assist with the EMS for, for the problem breathing and those type of associated calls that are, that are more frequent whenever the temperature is high, lack of hydration. So, we're changing a couple of the operations, we're bringing in a couple of support vehicles just to help EMS for that with the firefighters. So, it's going to be a challenging day, we're already assuming that it'll be like that. Hopefully, it'll be nice and quiet, but rest assured, we're prepared for whatever happens. Okay, that's the Jubilee stuff, the prep for it and just a lot of work with planning for the community. I guess I had just been contacted today for your development plans that you already approached. So, a comprehensive study. So, that's underway already and we'll be able to offer new, that information to the fire, or the fire services in Mechanicsburg to start deploying. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, chief. Anything for Chief Neff? Hearing nothing, we'll move on to President Trace, if you wouldn't mind coming forward. Thank you very much for your thorough report. Is there anything you'd like to highlight or add to your written report?
Actually, all I want to, one thing I want to add is, thanks to Nate and Gary and all of that. They're actually doing a tabletop exercise tonight at the fire station for Jubilee Day. They had to, they had to do their apparatus checks and then they were going to go, Gary and I were both all there already, but they were going to go and mass down to Bjerg's Gallery place as far as to give a little bit of tribute to Craig Gower, you know, who recently passed away and all of that. So, and after that, they were going to go back to the station and do a tabletop exercise based on Jubilee Day. I really don't have much, too much of anything else. I mean, we've been preparing a lot for Jubilee Day. I'm sure if it is needed, we got plenty of water now. I just bought like 15 cases of water and someone dropped out the scuba water for us to use and everything. So, if something would happen to whatever, it'll be, anytime a needle to Jubilee Day, it's there. Everything, so. I would say for those who come out in Jubilee Day, can come down to the firehouse, enjoy some food and get out of that sun, you know, undercover or whatever, but so, that's it.
Two quick things, President Trace, thank you very much. Number one, could you just touch on the FEMA grant just so that our assembled guests hear a little bit about the efforts there?
Which one, or both of them?
Both of them would be great.
Okay, we received, we got a grant through FEMA for self-contained breathing apparatus. We have received them, members are being trained in it. Once they, we reach a certain percentage of our members trained, they're going to start using them. Now, I just got to get off my butt and finish up the paperwork to, to take care of that. The other grant, unfortunately, Cumberland County decided to change their communication system for a change. It's costing money. So, with the help of Chief Neff and a couple others, we put in for a grant to help pay our share of the cost for the, the radios. The latest word I have is just, they receive nearly 8,000 applicants and just go around for the FEMA grants and everything. Everybody, everybody, the total requested was for $3.7 billion. They got $324 million. So, they've gone through some of the first checking as far as scoring of the applications. So, I think within a few months, there, there will be finalizing that, hopefully with communications being such a high priority. You know, we'll get that, out of that $3.7 billion, you'll find a lot of that is for fire apparatus. They're not going, they're not going to do many of those. So, and I just did see that it's all but certain that the FEMA grants and everything will be continuing on. I guess it's up to, the House of Representatives has passed the bill reauthorizing it. The Senate has to vote on it, but it was their bill in the first place. With, there's some changes based on what the House did. So, it looks like it's going to be signed. So, I would think sometime maybe in July or August, it'll be signed as far as to reauthorize it to, I think it's 2030. Which is good news for all fire departments.
Thank you very much. Any questions for President Trace? Thank you again for being here and for your report. Looking forward to seeing you next time. And then that brings us to EMC Wardle.
So, the borough manager always asks me to make sure that I'm improving the weather forecast. I do have good news, the heat index for Thursday is now 95 instead of 102, so.
Well done.
We'll take, we'll take it where we can get it. We are under heat advisory through Friday at 8:00 PM. So, obviously, temperatures are high. Humidity has not been too bad, but it is expected to increase as we head towards the weekend. No real chance of storms until maybe Friday and Saturday, but even Friday is a slight chance at this point. Just overall a warm pattern and this summer is shaping up to probably look that way a lot. Outside of that, we've done everything we can to prepare for Jubilee Day. The updated event action plan with the weather forecast went out today. We've been working with the fire department, the police department, Penn State Health Lifeline EMS, the Chamber, Cumberland County Department of Public Safety, the Fire Police Task Force for the county. We've been having calls since, well, meetings and a few calls, but mostly in person since February to make sure we're prepared for Jubilee Day. There will start to be action tomorrow as far as preparing and then Thursday, the Emergency Operations Center will be open to ensure that we are prepared to, to address any issues that occur. We don't have to worry about severe weather this year, at least not in terms of thunderstorms. So, we'll just have to monitor the heat-related illness issues and I've been telling the first signs of heat-related illness for heat stress and heat exhaustion before we get to heat stroke. It's really important that you catch those things quickly because, especially with the people that we have control over, the first responders, they want to continue to serve the public and we have to make sure that we're protecting them from themselves if that's necessary. Outside of that, in terms of wrapping up my duties as Emergency Management Coordinator, I provided a list of the duties that this role performs, or at least I've performed in this role on a regular basis, to Lane and to the chiefs for their review. I think it's as comprehensive as I could come up with in my brain. So, I think I I think it's as comprehensive as I could come up with in my brain, so I think I covered most everything. But certainly, if there's any questions on that, they can feel free to ask me either now or lean up to the end of July when my resignation date is effective. Or even after that, I'm not going anywhere. You might see me on the other side of this, this platform, but I'm not going anywhere. And then after Jubilee Day, we'll be working on an after-action report and then also working to make sure that all documents are transferred to the borough so that we have the electronic record-keeping. Any questions?
Thank you. On behalf of the committee, thank you for all the work you've done for Mechanicsburg. That's the end of the committee report section.
Thank you, sir. So Mr. Bucher is out. Ms. Agerton, would you like to handle municipal and community outreach?
Absolutely. So library liaison report. So their summer program underway. It started on June 1st and it goes through August 15th. The kiddos and adults can read and get prizes. So if you guys are interested, check out their website. I was excited to attend their painting project that they had outside the library. So they have barriers and they had several applicants out there that painted beautiful pictures, scenic things of their imagination with reading. I did, just for the record, tell them that Borough Council will be painting a barrier next year and entering the contest, although I will not be lending my artistic skills to that project. I said John would handle that. So we also have a lot of different stuff going on at the library. They have the Forgotten Friend Reptile Sanctuary, which will be June 19th. There's an interactive theater on the 26th. So just support them. Go down to their website. There's tons of stuff to be done all summer long there and very excited for just the energy the library brings. They just have a great bunch of volunteers and employees. And then I will turn it over to Mr. Anthony for a school board report.
Well, it's June. They take the month off, so I never.
Oh, really? School's not in session. All right. And then I will turn it over to our junior councilperson.
In May, we had the Mechanicsburg Marching Band march the Memorial Day Parade. And then June 6th ended the 2023, 2024 school year. And then over the weekend, June 15th, 2.90 helped out with a Eagle Scout project in the environmental center, trees and trees center. So it's pretty good.
And I'll turn it back to you.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Community and economic development, Ms. Agerton.
Wait, we're back to me again. So weird. All right. And then I'm going to go ahead and turn it back to you for a loan review board.
We have no report on that at this time. We're working on pulling that into the borough. We're kind of in the midst of it.
All right. Anything from the Planning Commission?
No, ma'am.
Easy peasy. Harb, we don't have much to report on, just continuing to work on ordinance changes. Slow but steady in detail. They're working really hard. Downtown Partnership, Rebecca Yurik is on vacation. Just please check out all of the events that are be going, that are going on with Downtown Partnership. We do have Community Day coming up. That is July 13th. Thank you. I'll never remember. It's a great event, so please come down to Memorial Park. We have lots of vendors. We'll have music. We'll have food. The fire company sells their, no, okay, just joking. We'll have food. That does not involve that. So please come down there. It'll be a fabulous event. And then, you know, looking forward to all of the energy that DMP is bringing down to our downtown. That is the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Next is property, parks, and recreation.
Oh, I think I said I'd do this one, too.
You did. Well, would you like for?
No, I got it. So we know on the 12th, we will be having the first rec event downtown on Strawberry Alley. Not Strawberry, Bravode Avenue, sorry. And please come down and support. As indicated by one of our community members, we have done a lot of research with the Liquor Control Board and what the laws are and how to scan people and how to safely serve alcohol. So I feel very confident. We had a great event last summer in which we did the first event with that. So I believe that this is going to be a great opportunity to highlight why we closed that alley and be able to support our downtown businesses. And I'm excited to hear the energy from the Chamber, and hopefully we'll have a great partnership with highlighting that, that event space for more to come. And then I'll roll into Shade Tree Commission. They are planting trees. We've moved our meetings outside. It's very exciting. We're getting fresh air, looking at the parks. Memorial Park, they just planted a whole bunch of more trees. When I was out talking to community members on the other side of Memorial Park, one of the things that they had said was that there were some eyesores. So the Shade Tree Commission has taken that to heart, and they are looking at planting trees. So in like 10 years, those eyesores will be gone. So just know that that's, I think, the hardest-working committee I've ever seen. They're out there digging holes all the time. EAC, they're continuing to talk about the recycling programs. They have some really great stuff coming up. They will be at Jubilee Day. And for anyone that wants to help pick up trash and recyclables afterwards, I'm looking for volunteers to help make that go smoother at the end of Jubilee Day. It does take a lot of committees and volunteers to make those things go on. And I will turn it over for a property update.
Thank you, ma'am. Real quick, on 219 East Main, Solicitor and Borough Staff, we're almost finished with the settlement agreement and working with the sellers and their attorneys. The final document for council review and approval is on track for the July 2nd meeting. And I'll let you know in the interim if something comes up that would delay that. Then the second item is with regards to 201 East Strawberry Alley. The borough has entered a formal, formal letter of intent with the seller of that property to purchase 201 East Strawberry Alley. Borough Staff is working with the seller on terms for the purchase agreement and will be conducting its due diligence effort, the same inspections and feasibility assessments as before over the next couple of weeks. And we'll, we'll have more information on this as we go through the process.
And Lane, for people that are new to this project, where can they find information about why we're pursuing this and what we've done so far on these properties?
We have a presentation on our website for our properties strategy, facility strategy. And, and they can find the mission, the two goals that we're working toward. And we have received, we haven't received any questions online recently for that, but I do need to refresh the timeline now that we're pushing more to the right than we had expected. And then also now we can add the, the work on 201 East Strawberry to work through that acquisition as well.
To be clear, people can't ask questions through the website.
There's a direct form to submit questions and it comes straight to me.
Any other questions?
Very much. Person of committee, Mr. O'Neil.
I have nothing tonight.
Nothing. Thank you very much. Citizens' comment. We reached the time during our meeting for the second citizens' comment section. Citizen input on items concerning Borough Council is welcome during this time. Comment is limited to three minutes for an accurate public record. Citizens are asked to approach the podium, state their name and address, be, by request, written and electronic submissions may be made to the Borough Secretary and entered into the public record. Anybody for citizens' comments?
Back here, Mark Sturrock, 48, North Fover Street. Have you heard from this lady back here? She asked about why are we purchasing this property at Main Street when we have problems on our streets? I mean, I got pictures back here, holes can swallow a car. That is ridiculous in this town. Thank you. And what we're going to spend, take a bond out for 4.2 million dollars for a building when our streets are falling apart? How shame is this? You bring anybody to Borough, they are ashamed to drive down these streets. I talked to the lady the other day. She's had four alignments in her car in five months because she goes down the road with four potholes. I told, come here and submit the bill, you guys, for those alignments. When is it going to change? When are you going to realize, the lady just said, the residents are not interested in this building? Now you're going to go buy another building. Apparently, the borough don't need the tax, tax money there. So why does Shreve Bay in this borough pay taxes anymore then? Because all you're doing is buying buildings. This is to get in our hand. When are we going to start worrying about the residents and the streets? You're more worried about buildings and someone having a fancy office and this and that. It's time to stop. It's time to stop and start looking at the residents' concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other citizens' comments?
John knows. I talked to him a long time ago about the street. I just wanted to know if and when there are any plans for redoing the street. I have people that come from Carlisle and, and other places to visit, and they say, "What the hell is wrong with your streets?" So that's my, I just want to know if there's any plans to redo the street. I don't hear an answer.
We don't address comments at this, but you'll get a comment about it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And I do want to admit, I've lived in my house for 52 years. Love it. Love the borough. Love the schools. My daughter's here from Nashville. She went to school from here. She played softball with Maggie. So, you know, we're fond people of Mechanicsburg, but the time is right to redo our streets, and I don't mind if my taxes are raised.
Say that louder, please.
Any other citizens' comments?
But not for the, not for the new building. I don't want my taxes raised for that. If we do redo the streets, I don't mind.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other business? Sir?
I would simply remind folks again, please be on the lookout for Borough employees doing roadwork or, or really any utilities doing roadwork. But just please be, be mindful.
A proclamation from the mayor's office. Any food you eat Jubilee Day, just calories don't count.
I did hear a comment, I'm sorry, but I did hear a comment. Someone said, "They're not going to renew the streets until all that new building is completed." Is that true? I want to know. Because that's not fair.
Thank you. Any else?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
I would just like to say that I welcome the opportunity to have DMP and the Chamber come talk to me after the meeting, just so we can start formulating the next steps together, if you guys don't mind. And that would be it.
Councilman Bier, nothing. Thank you.
Well, I was planning on telling people to enjoy water with their alcoholic beverages at Jubilee Day, but since that's no longer the case, I'll just tell everybody to make sure they're hydrated at Jubilee Day to prevent any heat-related illnesses.
I hope not, Mark.
I just forgot something. The candidate that we offered a conditional offer to said, no.
Thank you all for being here and for all the work that you put in every day to make Mechanicsburg a better place. grateful for all of you. Let's have a great Jubilee Day.